I have no modifications.
So, do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number two, appointments. Park Board, there is one, an expired term, ending July 1st of 2022. And due to resignation, this appointee must reside inside the city limits. And there were several applicants that had applied for this. And I want to thank them and commend them for coming forward and offering to volunteer to serve on this committee. And after reviewing those, I move to appoint. I want to thank them for that. And I'm going to move to appoint Steve McBride to the Park Board for an unexpired term ending July 1st, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, could we think, I'd like to thank Molly Reynolds for her service on the Park Board.
Yes. How many years did Molly serve you?
I would have to look it up, but...
Okay, that's fine. Molly Reynolds, I'm not sure how many years you've served, but the commission thanks you for stepping forward and serving on the Park Board. Your input was valuable as far as the Park Board. And I appreciate you offering up your service. So, thank you very much. Item number three. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item four, a public hearing. Public hearing to consider approving the amended 2021 budget. Lacy?
Hello, okay. We have reviewed the current performance of each fund as compared to the approved 2021 budget and proposed three amendments to the budget to increase spending authority in the following funds. Special use sales tax, sanitation and education sales tax. A summary of the factors related to these increases in special use sales tax. This is the increase in collected sales tax revenue cumulative over multiple years. We'd like to transfer the cash balances to the appropriate use funds. So, street dollars to a street fund, that sort of thing.
Right.
Each category of funding will be transferred to the appropriate corresponding fund. However, to do so, will exceed our budget authority. So, those transfers are looked at as expenditures within that specific fund. The sanitation fund for the cash purchase of polycarts.
Right.
And then education sales tax to, the increase represents increased sales tax collections versus budget projections. And these dollars are passed on to USD 446.
All right. Thank you, Lacy. Being this is a public hearing, I will open this up. Does anyone out there in the public have a comment? Would you like to step forward and make a comment? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions concerning this matter?
I have none.
I have no questions.
Then I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amended 2021 budget as presented.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item five, items for commission action. Consider authorizing issuing a request for proposals for electrical engineering design services to upgrade electrical infrastructure and service to Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo. Scott, how are you?
Good, how are you all?
Good.
Good. Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo currently operate on an outdated electrical infrastructure, which is owned by the city. With this update, the local utility provider has agreed to assume electrical services for the park and zoo. In order to proceed with this project, stamped engineering plans must be completed.
Gentlemen, this project has been ongoing and it's part of also working towards our master plan and everything. And also, Scott has to deal with, we have animals that when the power goes out, have to be taken care of. They have portable generators, different things like this. So, EverG has been very good. They're willing to partner with the city, put the transformers in, wire for, I mean, there's going to be a lot of cooperation, but it does require stamp plans. It requires an engineer to come in and look at the services. We would like to do some metering. We'd also like him to work with PGA and the Park Board and consider future expansions. And this is also, will be a plan that can be done in phases. So, you know, we want to look at converting it all back over to EverG, the city getting out of the electrical business, because, I mean, we basically beg EverG to come fix it when it goes bad. And we want a plan for the future. You know, people want the one way to be lighted and different things like this. So, we hope to work with this electrical engineer to put plans together. May not be now, maybe in five years when we get to that park where we can do those things, but that's the whole focus of getting this plan, stamp plan, that EverG then will be able to do what they're going to do. And we can move forward with getting electrical service to the park and zoo and having a generator for backup service at the Stevens buildings.
All right. I understand that, I believe the only three phase out there is for the carousel.
Exactly.
And this will, everything else, and they're going to convert that over to a single phase. So, everything out there will be single phase. And then everything will be, the service will be underground?
Yes.
Underground to new meter pedestals?
Yes, we'd like to do everything underground. And like you said, convert that one, three phase to single phase, which I believe will be considerable savings in the long run.
Right.
And just provide good electrical service throughout the park and lighting. You go out there at night, it is dark. So, with this plan, EverG again is willing to assist, get lighting in the park. So, it is lit up at night and...
Okay. Well, that, they will also be, how is that going to work with the lighting? Would there be, will, will it be lights that will be added to our electric light contract?
Where we're talking right now, I mean, we'll have the engineer design it work with EverG, but they talked about doing special poles, not just the wooden poles.
Right.
But the metal poles at a very low rate. But that could all, that will all just be a part of what the commission decides at that time as we move forward. If you go with EverG on the lighting plan, they maintain it.
Right.
If a light goes out and if we put in the nice poles throughout the park, could be a good. But we also want PGA to have an input in this with their zoo master plan and Scott. So, it all looks good and it's what you guys want.
Sure, okay. That will eliminate what's left of any open wire service.
Absolutely.
All that service is bare.
Yes.
Probably number six copper.
Yes.
And of course, we've, you know, they've been phasing that out for a good number of years. So, it's always prone to breakage, to failure.
Yep.
So, then, does the park itself, will it, it should qualify as recreational lighting then, which is a little different than street light, lighting?
Yeah.
Okay, so that should be hopefully a more favorable rate.
Okay, that's good information.
I'm thinking, I mean, I'm going by past memory, they used to have a recreational light, and I'm guessing they still do. So, that would come into play, because that's a different system or a different setup than what most cities have. So, but it's something to, for us to consider with them, to see what it is they actually have.
Absolutely.
And get the best rate possible for whatever lights are going to be needed in, within Riverside Park. So, that would be a good deal. And then they will end up setting, picking locations where these pad mount transformers are going to go.
Yeah, with the electrical engineer, I think we're asking him to work with EverG and where the best place to put those so that services can be ran and, yes.
Okay, and then as far as the underground services, do we have a fairly good idea of where the composition of the soil is, if it's, you know, are we running into limestone in certain areas?
That I don't know.
Or is it just a mixture?
John, I'm looking at John, it's got, John's kind, you know, we're doing Kitty Land and John will be bringing a sewer line across there. So, that might give us a good idea of what that soil is like over there.
I know that the cemetery often runs into limestone.
Yeah.
When they're digging. So, it wouldn't be surprising to run into that in the park.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Commissioners?
My concern reading the request for proposal was the sequencing with the master plan and didn't...
Yes.
It was confusing that it appeared that the electrical would go separate with some thought, but, you know, the real driving force is going to be the master plan. And, you know, even with the Stevens building, I think years ago it was discussed, and even in our tour, the problems with animal care in the Stevens building, it's like, you know, are you at the point? The building is built in the early 70s.
Absolutely.
Has it?
Yeah, has it lived?
Has it reached its life?
Yep.
And now it's time to raise it. So, that's why I think it's really critical that the driver be the zoo plan and then the electrical support for that.
Yeah, I want him to work it right into, and we even mentioned to Chris when he was here, PGA.
Yeah, because the engineer will be really beneficial to, even like the motor on the carousel, three phase does operate more efficiently than single phase, but how to integrate that and if the change or what need. I don't recall seeing that you've included for the, and maybe I overlooked it, the electrical engineer to actually look at the buildings, each building where the new service will connect?
Yeah, maybe we didn't put it clear enough and maybe I need to, but we want him to go look at the services and determine what can be on a service, the size, make sure everything's appropriate, determine all that, how the service is, where it needs to be ran. And we want a good footprint, because right now, there's a lot of stuff out there that we don't know that's there. And we often run into it. So, a good plan, what buildings can be combined? We want to make sure we get everything metered. Right now, we're on one meter. So, we're getting our buildings metered with disconnects and the appropriate safety devices we need out there in a public area.
They should evaluate the main panels in each building.
Absolutely.
To, that should be probably the termination point at the building to make sure that they are in good working condition.
And we can add that to the RFP before we send it out tomorrow.
Because I think what you might run into is some buildings with questionable wiring beyond that point too. So, that would be something, you know, to evaluate maybe at the point of either zoo plan or electrical engineer that it all gets covered. But, no, that was my main concern. It wasn't real clear when I was reading the sequencing. And I thought, well, you really want the zoo plan done first, so you got all their data. So, and what you're telling me is that basically, they'll be working hand in hand and the electric plan schematic design won't be completed till after the zoo plan's done.
Right. I want him, if the master plan says we're getting a new Stevens, you know, education building, that electrical plan should be designed so that we're not back there building it, putting in a new transformer because we're undersized it.
Right.
Right. So, you're absolutely right. We want them to work hand in hand and, you know, the zoo master plan is anticipated to be done by May, approximately.
May, early June.
So, I think it, both of them working together, probably will be about that time when both of them get done.
Since this is overlapping with the zoo master plan, would you gentlemen like Mayor Yu Suci also to help us on this electrical side as well as we review these proposals? Would that be okay?
I'm not sure I understood what you just asked.
Previously, you appointed Mayor Yu Suci to work with us on the zoo master plan. And since this is kind of overlapping with that project, would you like him to work with us on this as well?
Well, it seems like it's right up his alley.
Yes.
I'd say that seems more than appropriate.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, are we, are we good?
I think this request is very timely. I think I'm ready to make the motion.
All right, then with that, go ahead.
I move to authorize the issuance of an RFP for electrical engineering design services to upgrade electrical infrastructure and service to Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item B, consider authorizing issuing a request for proposals for design services for a new public works building. John, how are you?
Doing well, good evening. So, last January in the strategy session, we planned to go through and review existing facilities in the area and see what other public works type facilities existed. This year, we reviewed Shunut, Coffield and Parsons. So, the team that we were doing the reviewing, everybody went to at least two of these facilities. And so, we reviewed them, looked at what we thought were the essential features. And our schedule was that we wanted to get a design RFP issued in December. And so, happy to report that we're on schedule to look at getting the building designed. So, within the RFP is a list of the requested features from the supervisors. And I've got to say, I'm very pleased because it's a, it's quite modest list. It doesn't, I didn't see anything that could be considered even slightly a frill. So, I think that they're looking there. And there's a potential, once you get sanitation, once you get street, and once you get the water and sewer folks all in the same building, I think there's the potential for some real synergy about the way we utilize our manpower in order to make our city services more efficient. So, that's a, that's one of the big uplifts from there. And this will be one facility for those groups. So, you know, rather than everybody going to a separate spot, they'll all be going to the same spot. And additionally, if we don't do this, we will need to make upgrades to some of the existing facilities that we have, you know, specifically the street department, that's probably the place that we need investment first. But, so here's the RFP and, and that's, that's what we have.
Okay. As far as having the workforce all under one roof, under the main supervision of one, you know, where I worked at, that's, we operated that way for years. We had multiple departments, substation metering, linemen, clerical, mechanic, everything. They worked under one, one boss.
Yep.
One boss, and there was an assistant supervisor that basically ran, gave direction to the crews and that. And we seemed to be able to work very well together over that period of time. I think we became more cohesive. We became more willing to step up, even though maybe that was not part of what people, what an employee would consider part of my duties. But I think it gave us that opportunity to where we all helped each other where we saw where we needed to help and where we could help. We were able to do that, and that turned out to be a big plus for us. And then when they fragmented it and then put department head over all those entities, even though they were all in the same building, it really fragmented everything, because now you had to go to another department head to ask for this or ask for that, because they were no longer under the control of one person. There were, now there were seven people that you had to go through, depending on what department you wanted, you needed something to work with. So, and that changed the dynamics of it. But, but this will be a good place to start. I've gone through the project scope, and I've looked at it here. Curious to see how this turns out. But I'm looking forward to that. I think in the long run, it'll be a good move if we're able to go ahead and pull this off and do it. And then the funding will come from the enterprise funds will be the source of this project. So, so I'm just, I'm just really interested and curious to see how this turns out. So, I'm going to open it up to my commissioners.
Yeah, I see the advantage of combining. I think we've talked about the benefit to bring one, one head for all the different departments, bring unification of facilities. The interesting aspect of this project is that it will be funded from the enterprise fund. Seeing how that's going to affect our rates that we're charging. You know, I did get my water bill, like everybody else, you did notice an increase, and I'm, mine's going to be $96, $98, $100 a month. And with the inflation that we've incurred in other aspects, I'm wondering just what the projection of this facility will do to the enterprise funds. I don't know if you've got square footage or that you've done any cost projection, but that would be one hesitation to start a design without knowing how that's going to impact our rates. And then also looking at the 1916 City Hall renovation, I think that would take priority over a public works building. But I, I see the need and I'm not opposed to a public works building, but I'm not comfortable at this time going for a request for proposal without knowing how that's going to affect our budget. And I know, you know, just kind of looking at our past review and, you know, the, we increased sanitation to purchase the polycarts quite a few years back, and we've been collecting that. So, you know, question is, do we have revenue coming into those that you can add the facility without impacting the water sewer rates now? So, and I know I caught you off guard with that, so I don't expect an answer right now, but that would be something that I would like to see before I would approve going out with an RFP.
Understandable.
So, you know, I think that's the direction, you know, when Kelly brought that up months back, you know, we got all these aging buildings and that cost of operating those to bring that money into one unified facility, and we're starting to address restroom, showers, break rooms. Why do three when one would work? Why do three when one would work? And maybe that's some of the place you're looking at, being able to fund a new facility is the unification and cost savings that we're spending now. But I would like to see that before I would vote in favor of going for a proposal at this time.
John, have we projected a budget for this building in our strategic plan?
As far as, I think I have a placeholder budget, but it's a placeholder budget only of something on the order of a million dollars.
And that, and that doesn't necessarily, you've not done a pro forma budget or any projected revenue stream versus, versus debt service that would tell us whether this is going to be, have a rate impact associated with it? Is that what you're saying?
We have not.
Oh.
That's, and that's a good point, because we've already raised the raise up to a certain point. So, it would have to be something that would be, we could make work without having to continue to raise those dollar amounts up. The good thing about it is that we've operated this way for such a long time. So, yeah, I think we all understand why this would be good, but not so sure that the timing is, that the timing is right for that. I think Dean and Leonard have both pointed out that we need to see how this is going to affect the rates that the citizens are paying now. And get a better projection of that and then see where that takes us. That might give us a better idea of where we need to move forward at that point. But hopefully somewhere down the road, I think we can do this. It will also give us, another point I forgot to make, that'll give us the ability to, being all working together, I think you get a chance to, on some limited basis, have some cross training ability.
Yes.
To where you have people able to fill in, maybe not have full knowledge, but be able to fill in here and there like we did where I worked at. And especially since we're having a problem filling slots, you know, sometimes you just have to do what you, with the manpower that you have. And if you can work that to where they have the ability to take on more responsibility and be able to help out various departments, you can kind of shore up some of your workforce at that point. But it's kind of hard to hire someone if you don't get anybody to come in to apply. So, I know we're all facing that, every city, you know, every industry, commercial business, we're all having trouble finding enough people to come in and work. So, I think, I think we all are in agreement. We'd like to hear and see more information on this.
Understood. And bringing up the cross training, that is absolutely a goal, because in order to maintain continuity of services, that makes it a much better.
Yes.
It makes us much more stable.
Yes.
We don't, you know, when that expertise goes through different groups, that means people can take vacation.
Yes.
And they don't have to worry about getting a phone call in the middle of the night while they're on vacation. So, I strongly support that.
John, one quick question, and that is, is there a capital... John, one quick question, and that is, is there a capital reserve fund established in public works right now that is, has a balance in it that would be part of funding a proposal like, like this new building?
There is. So with all of our public work funds, for example, water sewers cash balance right now is three point seven million. The capital reserve fund for water sewer is three point five million and sanitation is seven hundred and fifty thousand. So I mean, from all, a little bit from all of those funds is how this would be funded.
So if it was funded from that, it would not require a rate increase, correct, Lacy?
I, I did not anticipate a rate increase. It's a little hard to know when we, we don't have parameters around it. You know, there's going to be so many operating efficiencies that, that I won't, I don't know that I'll be able to calculate the, you know, that intangible cost.
These, these balances that you just read to us, they are fully unencumbered funds at this point?
The, the capital reserve project is, is unencumbered funds. The other two were their operating accounts, so not, not necessarily a project account. I, I would have to look up what their normal operating balance is to give you a, you know, a better view of what, like what percentage of that annual operating budget we're talking about. I don't have that right in front of me, though.
The, the question that I had was that it's with these funds that are currently on hand and income that we project over the near future, you know, three to five years, how much, how much money would be available compared to how much debt would we try to service to, to build this building? And that way you could see whether the funding stream is going to impact rates or not. Certainly, I know there's, there's a reason why you haven't planned to impact rates, and I think it's because there's probably rationalization for these funds.
Right. And I, I don't anticipate debt funding at all for this project.
Wonderful.
That, Lacy, that brings up another question on the master plan for the water plant. There's some projected costs coming up within the next three to five years. How is that going to affect, what effect will that have on this project? Aren't those totaling up to about six point one million dollars?
Yes.
Yes, so.
Okay, so how did that tie in with?
Part of those, do you, do you recall?
That was all KDHE funded, all KDHE.
Right. We have a KDHE revolving loan that has quite a bit of authority remaining in those loans. So the, the next two to three years will be with that, those loan dollars. And then there's quite a few opportunities that are upcoming through federal and state funding for infrastructure type improvements with water sewer streets, things like that. And so we will be pursuing those options to help us with that master plan.
Okay. So you don't see that as a potential problem with those costs coming up in the very near future then?
We need to take a look at all of our projects, you know, during the, the capital project portion of our budgeting and prioritize and see where each of them fits within the puzzle. I, I mean, I think that that's a step we have, we take every year. This year would be no different.
I think that's where you need to look at. With the enterprise funds, it's just more than the building. You know, to come and ask you to respond how this is being done tonight is really unfair because you've got the water treatment plant, we've got some things with sewer treatment, we've got water distribution, we've got sewer collection, we've got this building, we've got just general, how is all this going to work together that we can maintain our rates? I think, you know, you need time. It's not fair to ask you to make response and give us direction to make a decision. I feel you need time to look and, and get an accurate picture. You know, we've, we've done headway in replacing sewer lines and replacing water lines the last few years, and that's because we've stayed true with the commitment, the loans. And I would hate to see us back up and now we're shifting that we can't do a sizable water line, sewer line replacement every year, every other year. Get it some way sequenced in because I and I cost us city money. Every storm we have with excessive rain and every time our sewer treatment plant can't process the inflow and it kicks water out into the river, it costs us money. And treating stormwater costs us money. The treated water and distribution that we lose through water leaks costs us money. So we need to, you know, look at the whole picture and continue like we have been and, and give you time to come back and say, this is what I feel comfortable with and then make that decision because, you know, you've got a lot better picture of what's going on the last few years. So I would hate to start asking you questions that you are not comfortable in leading to.
We, we can look closer at it in our, our planning retreat.
Right.
If my memory serves me, I do believe this was a budgeted, you know, project in this year's upcoming budget. Believe we had that million dollars in there through the, the water sewer capital reserve fund. We've been, you know, putting in, I believe, five hundred thousand dollars for multiple projects on a yearly basis. However, we've received the, the low interest revolving loans for the water line replacements, which we had previously been saving for. We have an alternate funding source. And then the automated meter project, which is moving forward, we had previously, you know, kind of earmarked those savings for that project. However, that's also within the, the loan or the CDBG, within the loan. So the reason we have that balance is we've found alternate funding sources for the things that we were previously saving for. So this, this was scheduled to be in the budget for 2022 because of, of that. We've reallocated the, the funding towards this project.
Okay. I mean, your projections have always been on the conservative side, which is good. So, yeah, there's, there's just some outstanding questions here and, and like I said, I wasn't expecting answers, but just general questions that have come up that, that we really need to take a look at.
So for, for Mike, to make sure I understand correctly, what, what are the questions that need to be answered before you, you want to see this item again?
Well, one would be how this would have an impact on, on rates.
Okay.
On that, that was one of the ones. And then, of course, that's all going to depend on the, what the cost of the project comes in at, but that would be the one thing. And then what the commissioners have already answered about making sure that we're able to still do some of the infrastructure projects on a continuing basis like water line, sewer line replacement, those kind of things that tie into to where they, they all kind of work in step to where we have the funding, the funding to go ahead and, and cover those projects and still move forward with, with a project like this. Kind of like putting a puzzle together and making sure that we have all the pieces that fit and, and it's very workable and it's something that's very doable, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Separate from the budget document, though, that, that kind of outlines all of those different projects. So maybe we just take a closer look at that at our next meeting to make sure that the projects you guys are referring to are, are all in there and it fits within that, that budget. Does that sound good?
That would sound good.
All right.
And that way we may come up with some additional questions, something that we, we can look at at that point once we go through that, so.
There will be some energy efficiencies, too, if we can get rid of some of those other facilities that are not efficient. And then also we've had, you know, trouble hiring people. A lot of that, you know, working conditions goes along with being able to attract employees. So we would like to have a, a place that's efficient and, and, you know.
Right.
Someplace that they're proud to go to work, you know.
Sure. And, yeah, I, I think we all understand that, that it's got to work hand in hand with everything else that we're trying to do also. So, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I think it's very, you know, something that we need to eventually get to a point and, and have, have that facility. I think there's so many pluses to that, especially if we continue to not being able to find enough people to, to maintain basic services.
Well, like you said, the cross-training is going to help us with that. Having them all in one building is going to make that much easier to accomplish. So we can bring that back to the next meeting and she can go over the budget for those projects so that you're all comfortable.
Show what the annual expense is on the buildings that you have and, you know, an idea of what, I think through some of our studies, there's been projection on what would be required at the building. So, you know, we're looking at currently, we've got X dollars in operating expenses for the, the three or four buildings and we're going to require restroom renovation. Here's a dollar by building the new building, then what would be the projected savings? You know, some of the things that we've talked about, well, the street department, the temporary office needs replaced, so that's simple. You're going to have hundred thousand dollars in a new temporary 200, and that could go to a new central facility. And just the idea of that we are making the right financial move. It sure sounds logical, but I'd like to see.
If I might suggest, it might make sense then to do a very limited engagement with a design professional to develop that very basic information to give us a much better order of magnitude cost of the projected facility. And at that point, so, you know, we have a very good idea of what our revenues are. The water use is, is relatively ratable, but understanding what our costs are, are going to be, even in an inflationary environment, that's a little bit more difficult. Since we're working off a very, very, very rough estimate at this point, just a few thousand dollars with a design professional could probably get us into, you know, plus or minus twenty-five, plus or minus fifty percent range that's much more reasonable. And so that, you know, that feeds back into the rate projections. So that's, that's another alternative. And I could, if the commission's interested, I could bring that RCA to the next meeting for a very small amount or, and actually it's less than what's required for commission action. So, I mean, we, we could engage the professional or, again, bring it back for commission action.
You could phase it into your request for proposal once you've selected your design professional that helps you with a cost analysis of the new building. Or I just thought maybe through some of the other budget years, we had looked at the maintenance that was required on our existing facilities and that number was available. But if it's, if it's not, then, you know, that could be postponed.
Replacement costs, I, I mean, I am not an industry professional in, in those types of things, so those numbers I will have to ask someone for. And being, having that projected or anticipated expense for, you know, replacement costs of one facility will be an important number in this analysis. So it's, it's one that I would like upfront.
And maybe, maybe through our discussion, we didn't go to the detail that I thought. I thought in some of the past years when we started discussing problems with the building that there were some numbers put out, but, you know, I think.
Do you have those?
Kind of the, the savings in that is, is not as critical as knowing if you're planning one million, one point five for a new facility, how does that impact our revenue now and are we going to look at a rate increase? I think, you know, if everything is good, we can avoid a rate increase, then go ahead with the request for proposal. But, you know, I'd like for that to come back and give you a chance to look at it.
Yeah, and I think what we can do, again, the, the sales of water, I think, is a relatively solid number. So our revenues are relatively well-understood. It's our costs that aren't. So we can also run some sensitivities to inflation and whatnot within our own operating costs as well. Because that very likely may come into play.
I don't have any more questions.
I don't either. So you will bring this back at the next meeting on the 23rd? Or is this something we will review at our planning session the first of the year?
So, so if acceptable, I'll bring a much more limited scope for design, as in the very front-end concept, developing that rough order of magnitude cost.
Okay.
With a design professional. So that, you know, again, the cost I'm thinking there, we're talking in the five or ten thousand dollars range maximum.
Okay.
And go from there.
And, and then we will discuss, you know, capital projects and things like that at the planning retreat. I, I will actually not be here at the meeting on the 23rd, so I won't be able to present any additional information on this at that time.
Okay. So this will, we'll just bring this up at the planning session then, correct?
Well, he'll bring the RCA for the limited information because I think you're going to want those costs in your planning session.
Okay. Okay. You'll have that on the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. That'll be great then.
Thank you.
All right. With that, thank you, Lacy. Thank you, John. So at that, we are going to table this to the December 23rd meeting.
Yes.
And I need to make a motion, have a motion on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Would someone, well, I'll make the motion on that, what I just said.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Moving along, we have item C. Consider authorizing acceptance, acceptance of KDOT Economic Development Funds for Work associated with development of the West Laurel Industrial Park.
Mayor?
Yes.
We're happy to present to you guys tonight a award from the Kansas Department of Transportation for a maximum of one million, one hundred and three, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for economic development at the industrial park. And we're asking tonight for you guys to move and accept this development funds for the necessary document and sign the necessary documents required by KDOT.
And this is from the KDOT Economic Development Fund. And our cost estimate out of this, the total project is one million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. And our local match is three sixty-seven, three hundred and sixty-seven, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. Correct. So, yeah. And that involves the Laurel and Main intersection, the turning radius that we.
Yeah, and the Enterprise Drive.
Enterprise Drive, yes. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I have a question about the Laurel and Main intersection. We talked about a, a walkway along Main Street. Is the crossing being planned at Laurel and Main to accommodate an ADA?
Sean?
Yes, we did, we did put in the ramps or we're planning to put in the ramps for the future sidewalk at that, at that intersection.
Okay. And I think, well, had it been talked that we were looking at an eight-foot sidewalk?
We were looking at a wider one. What's those called, modal?
Yeah, the, the multi-use path, the minimum DOT standard is eight foot. So that's for bicycle and pedestrian use. So can be wider, but eight foot is the minimum width.
And that's what's planned at the intersection?
Yeah, I think some concept drawings we've done take an eight-foot path out to the Walmart area or some, some potential future projects, and this would. area or some, some potential future projects and this would accommodate an eight-foot walkway as well. Along Laurel, I think it was smaller. I think that's a five or six-foot wide, normal or typical sidewalk, but on the highway, we were going with the eight-foot multi-use.
I noticed right at that intersection along Main Street with the drainage culvert and then the eight-foot crossing to parallel Main, making sure that we've got it all that planned. So, if we do go, we're not going to have to do additional site work or cut a curb and put that in. So, we are, we are safe that if we do get a, a grant or proceed with that.
Sidewalk.
We're not going to have to change anything.
Correct.
Okay. That was my only question. It's a great opportunity for us to see the investment coming from KDOT that assists us in making our industrial park more accessible.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hayes, you have?
Well, I support this motion. I think it's important that we proceed. I do have a question of concern and that is that these are best on, based on estimates that were developed some months back. Am I correct? These are, these estimates are six months, nine months old or whatever they were at the time that we made the application to KDOT?
Correct. And, and you do have a very valid point that, and I think we're going to talk later in some other items about increases in construction costs. One thing that, that will benefit us, when we, we did this, the Laurel and Main intersection kind of got added on late and we did a kind of a worst-case scenario concept. And, you know, running, turning movements through there, we were able to come up with a less costly option. So, I think we have a lot of fluff in that Laurel and Main intersection that I believe it's going to be, we're going to be okay on our cost estimate to answer your question.
Thank you.
Based on it.
I was, knowing that, I will not pursue that question any further at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. With that, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve acceptance of KDOT's Economic Development Funds and approve execution of any necessary documents required by KDOT.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item. Item D. Consider authorizing award of the Maple Street reconstruction from 17th Street to Peter Pan, Peter Pan Road. John again.
We originally bid this some time ago and in fact, our bid was off in October. And the difficulty that we ran into was the initial bid was significantly higher than what we had originally anticipated. The original engineer's estimate was around 2.15 million dollars. And to that, we'd added about 200,000 dollars worth of scope. And so, if you add about the 20% cost escalation factor from when the original estimate was done, that takes our cost around, to around about 2.7 million dollars. So, there's a pretty significant difference between that 2.7 and the 3.1, 3.14 that was bid on the project. Again, there was one bidder on the project, so that, you know, there certainly wasn't a multitude to choose from. Through negotiations and scope changes, we've brought that number down to 2.7 million dollars. Now, KDOT will pay for, I believe 1.6 on this one? Roughly 1.6 million dollars. It's, you know, 1.5, 9, something, but yeah, roughly 1.6 million dollars. So, the scope, the biggest scope change that we had was we took a, an existing stormwater pipe that was going to be re-boarded with a larger size and Sean did some analysis and found that that was, it would probably work and that saved 200,000 dollars alone with just that one scope change. The contractor also found some more advantageous bids and we ended up at the 2.7 million dollars. We'd also, at the same time, bid the overlay work from 10th to 17th. And we'd had, had a previous bid on overlay work on Myrtle from 10th to 17th. At this point, in order to conserve, conserve funding, it's thought that we not accept the overlay bid on Maple and rescind the previous acceptance of the bid on Myrtle Street and take and crack seal and work on intersections as appropriate in order to, to fix those roadways and bring them up to standard. So, that cost is not in here, but that would be a much lower cost alternative than to what we, than to what we have right now. So.
So, will that, that will make up the majority of the difference between with that bid coming in 20%?
Yeah.
Higher? Would be pretty close making that difference up?
Yeah. It, it puts us, it puts us very close to that, yes.
Okay.
And plus some of the funds from the utility department for that water replacement will be used there as well, so.
That seems to be the, the problem, you know, we have to go through a list of approved contractors because state money's involved in it and then, and then not being able to get.
This was, this was actually, this was actually our bid. And so, this was a city bid and not a KDOT bid.
Well, I mean, I was referring to the, the Maple, the Bettis.
Yes.
Yeah, that, being a, being a pre-approved contractor and we only seemed to get one bid.
Yeah.
Yes, kind of disappointing.
Yes. And again, it was, I think, very well-advertised and there was a lot of interest shown beforehand, but for whatever reason, multiple contractors that had indicated they were going to bid decided not to.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Commissioners, you have any input or have questions for John?
You said something about rescinding a bid that we've already accepted for the, for the Myrtle Street meeting?
Yes, we were going to do a milling and overlay back. The bid was received in June and we accepted it in July, I believe. The work was going to be done in August, but that particular contractor got into, got very, very busy and has been unable to do the work. And so, rather than doing that 180,000 dollars worth of work, we'd rather crack seal at this point and work on intersections to clean those up.
Is that, I guess this is a question for you, Kelly. Is that a separate motion or do we just send them, send them a notification that they haven't met our time boundary and so they are no longer?
We planned on bringing it back to your, if you approve this, we plan on bringing it back to your next meeting to rescind that.
Yes.
Action.
Thank you.
That's what I needed to know. Okay. Commissioner Kalish?
With the, the interest of the contractors before a bid and then now only receiving one bid, is this something that you feel this is an accurate bid or should it be considered to reject and rebid? Or, you know, why, did you get any input on why the other contractors decided not to submit a bid?
Sean and I talked about that and I, and rather putting words in his mouth, he's right here, so.
Yes, the, one of the controlling items of work or perhaps the controlling item of work is asphalt. Bettis is an asphalt contractor. They primed the job. There's a number of other pieces do the job, so a number of subcontractors. So, there's a limited number of asphalt companies in the area. Another one, another asphalt company did have off, have a price out there, but due to their volume of work, they did not want to prime it. They would have subbed it, but quite honestly, they, they're in a situation, they're behind on a lot of work and I don't think a prime would pick up their, their price and bid it. You know, unfortunately, we're, we're just in that window of not having a lot of asphalt contractors and there's a lot of work right now. We kicked around switching to concrete, totally away from asphalt, but the, the prices were just too, too high for us to, to accommodate that. So, I, I don't, we don't think we're going to gain anything rebidding it. I was at a conference last week with some folks from KDOT. They said they've seen about a 20% increase across the board. Where we're at now, it's probably about, it's about a 20% increase from, from where we thought we'd be. So, I don't, I really don't think we're going to gain much if we do rebid it. And my worry is it's even going to be higher if we, if we rebid it.
Well, with those conditions of, of why you got one bid and then the other situation with the other contractor, it's, it's justified to proceed, you know? I, I don't, I, I kind of agree with, we go back to bid, we could go the other way. And so, I think this is our best.
I think we're in a, just a construction market right now where we're going to see a big jump in, in prices just with all the amount of work that's out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sean. If there's no further questions, then I'm going to entertain a motion, gentlemen?
I'm prepared to make that motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize award of the Maple Street reconstruction from 17th to Peter Pan Road to Bettis Construction, the amount of 2,757,829,37 cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item E. Consider approving contract for Southeast Lift Station Engineering and Construction Management. John, please.
This is the item that was tabled from our November 18th meeting. We're looking at doing some additional work at the Southeast Station and there had been some, several questions for trans systems and to, to refresh, we are looking at taking the existing pumps that we know work in the system, the four large pumps that we have sticking, if you, actually, if you look over, that's pretty good. The crane on the right-hand side services the western bay of the two bays and it has three large pumps in it. The eastern bay used to have three small pumps in it. Those are the three small pumps that suffered the vibration and also the metal failure, metal fatigue. So, we're looking at placing one large pump in the bay where the small pumps used to sit and having three pumps where the, the three large pumps have always sat. That will require some engineering work in order to be able to set the large pump and connect it into the existing manifold that serves the three pumps. So, the manifold itself is of sufficient size. We just need to pipe up to it and we need to make sufficient structural modifications to be able to hold the rails that those pumps ride on. So, it's not, it's not, it's not very, very complicated work, but it's, it's work that does need to be engineered. And so, so the commission did have some questions that were related to trans systems and so Sean is here tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I did have some questions, Sean. What, what caused the failure? I mean, it's pretty simple installation. I know your company has done numerous lift stations like this. It's just unusual, you know, in, in 10 years to lose every pump and metal fatigue, vibration, them coming loose from the mounting. What, what happened?
It is unusual. You know, there, there's tens of thousands of, of submersible pump systems out there. So, what we did during design, you know, we, we worked with the city to pick a manufacturer that we felt comfortable with, that had a, a good product. And, you know, it's pretty obvious there's some, some type of flaw to me in those smaller, the smaller pump system. There's vibration that no one, the manufacturer can't seem to figure out. And, you know, the, the path, and we've talked about this, is we can keep trying to figure out why these are failing with the manufacturer or quite honestly, I think city staff is just so frustrated with the situation, switch to the larger pumps to get something that works.
Well, it, it's, it's actually not so much a matter of frustration, is that I would not feel that we could run those small pumps without vibration sensors installed so that we could do some sort of shut-off system to keep the system from ripping itself apart. Investigated getting that sort of vibration sensor mounted on or in the pump and they could only do it if we purchase more small pumps. And I, and I was, that's a road I thought was a very bad road to go down. So, in order to safeguard our systems, abandoning use of the small pumps, I, I can't figure out a way to use those without, with, in any sort of reliable fashion. So, just, that's the.
Yeah, that's the thing, I, I think we need to know why or what happened so we don't go back to the same thing, which if it's in the manufacturers of the small pumps and, you know, don't go with the same system that failed, but then I want to be sure that when we go in with the repairs, that everything is done that, you know, 10 years isn't a long. And also, you know, is there, was there a breakdown in communication from contractor, equipment manufacturer and our staff on, on maintenance procedures? You know, if that's the case.
Yes.
Then I think we want to make sure that after it's done, that John gets all the support from the manufacturer, that every step is followed, that we're not looking at, and I guess really the problems had been going on for some time before it got to this stage. So, you know, we, we want, at the end of it, if we're going to spend 32,000 with your firm, then I, I think we need to feel comfortable that we're not going to be looking at the situation, that you're, you've had the freedom to analyze and to make recommendations and to design a system that's going to be trouble-free and that when, when a contractor walks away and you walk away, that John and his staff have the training, the documentation, the instructions, that with change of staff, that knowledge can be transferred down, that if it was a maintenance issue, that we've got that resolved. If there was some misunderstanding on procedures of handling the pumps or backflow preventers or check valves or whatever, that, that's covered too.
Yeah, the, we, we did, you know, prepare O and M manual for the facility and I, and since then, the, the supplier or manufacturer's rep has made some additional recommendations on, on some maintenance schedules for the city. That's above and beyond what was provided by the manufacturer at the time. I, I mean, unfortunately, I think there's, it is just a unfortunate situation that, that off-the-shelf type item, the pump system obviously has some flaws that should, should be lasting longer than they are. And I think switching to this larger pump is kind of a, a no-brainer. It's going to, we know it works adequately. It worked adequate, it works adequately in three instances there. Putting a fourth one in, since they're variable frequency drive, it, they're going to operate fine. You know, the three original pumps, smaller pumps, the idea is during low flow, you know, it'd be more efficient energy-wise to run those. And then, since the thing's been constructed, it's been an extremely wet period, so the city had no advantage even having those smaller pumps. So, certainly going to the larger pump and, and them being a variable frequency drive when you can operate them at a 30% capacity. and them being a variable frequency driver, when you can operate them at a 30% capacity, it's gonna, the system's gonna operate as originally intended, um, just with a, a more reliable, proven pump, so.
So, the one large pump will be the primary well that's used normally, or is it the overflow?
Uh, we'll, we'll have, uh, s- since we'll have two bays, one with three pumps and one with, uh, one pump, we'll make sure that all of those pumps get used in any given month, so that, that they're not just sitting there. Uh, but the primary bay, uh, is going to be the one with the three large pumps.
Okay.
And the reason we have to have the second bay is because we have to be able to clean those pits out.
Right.
Um, to my knowledge, they haven't been cleaned, um, ever. So, in, by pumping them down and cleaning them out, that prevents an accumulation of debris that can be sucked up into that impeller, and it's just, it's, it's heavy enough that the, it's light enough that it can get picked up, but it, it's not so, uh, it, it's not so, it's heavy enough that it falls back down. And I think that there, there might be some of that taking place as well.
Okay. Okay. I think those are the answers that I was looking for, assurance that when we're done, that we're not gonna have the, the problem again. You know, you two have talked enough, and that, um, it, it was a mechanical failure more than, than anything else. Maintenance also was, sounds to be a factor, but...
Absolutely was.
We're gonna get all that addressed. Good, okay. Well, thank you, Sean.
Thank you. I know, I have no questions.
I have no questions either. So, I'm gonna entertain a motion on this, gentlemen.
I move to allow execution of the contract for engineering and construction management of the south lift station modification in the amount of $32,000 to Trans Systems Corporation.
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item F, consider authorizing an additional stop sign at the intersection of Taylor Road and 21st Street, making this a four-way stop.
And, uh, first I would like to compliment myself for the very high degree of graphical skill that I used in creating the, the, uh, (laugh). Um, the, the situation that we have right now is that we have three stop signs. Those are the, uh, short red lines, um, that are currently exist at that intersection. And what somebody expects is, especially if they're headed eastbound, uh, they're expecting if they're coming to a stop sign, that the person across from them is coming to a stop sign, and they're not. So, it, it has been observed on at least two occasions, um, by people who've reported them directly to me, that somebody turning southbound off, off of Taylor, because they're slowing down, all right? If you, if they're just going through Taylor, that wouldn't be so much of a problem, but as they're slowing down to go, to make that, um, southbound turn, the car at the stop sign thinks, okay, they're slowing down to stop. And then they start to go through the intersection while the other person doesn't have a stop sign. And, uh, um, no accidents in those two observations, but, uh, we've talked to the county, and they're willing to put a little four-way tag on their signs, and so we can get, uh, a four-way stop there, which would solve really all of those difficulties.
Yeah, I noticed, uh, at Neewalla, the intersection of Park and Main Street was the same, similar situation, a three-way stop, and if you're going west on 160 to turn, uh, south, you didn't have to stop. And it was really, really confusing that if you were on one of the other intersections of, you know, very easy for you to pull out in front of a car making a turn, and...
Exactly.
When you brought that up, yeah, so, you know, that's, I've been in that intersection, and if there's no traffic, it's not an issue, but the time that you're meeting a car going west, you don't know what's going on.
And, and, and really, it's one of those situations where, uh, with, with local people, it's really not that much of a problem.
Yeah, we don't stop at stop signs anyway.
(laugh) You don't have a camera in my car, do you? No. But, but, uh, when we, when we look at it, at this situation, a lot of people are taking Taylor Road now because Google's telling them to. And so, we get a lot of people who normally would never, I mean, they, they don't know anything about our traffic patterns, 'cause otherwise you have to kinda know that Taylor Road's there, until Google came along, and it's, you know, since we all drive it, Google sees us driving it and says, hey, here's a good way to miss those stop signs.
Yeah. Well, I agree that it's a signage issue, um, because it's not particularly indicated, uh, that the, the absence of a stop sign is there. Sometimes intersections that are three-way stops are indicated as three-way stops, and this is not indicated as a three-way stop. Um, I, I think I saw Jerry step up to the, towards the front. Jerry? In terms of signage for this particular intersection, what's your preference, sir?
Ideally, I would like to, so the situation is that Majestic Drive stop sign is inside the city, 21st Street stop sign is inside the city. The east or westbound traffic stop sign where it would, where we're proposing is inside the city. The issue is that the eastbound Taylor Road traffic stop sign is outside the city.
Wow.
So, ideally, I would like to remove that stop sign and just have two-way traffic as a through street, but l- lacking that authority, I think it's important to, to make that intersection safe as best we can in the simplest ways, just to add another stop sign where it's a, a three-way stop, make it a four-way stop. The other issue, as you said earlier about it, you know, three-way stop, if this were to be a three-way stop, it wouldn't be Majestic traffic, or it, it just wouldn't work as a three-way stop, because you have Majestic coming in there.
Thank you.
Do, do you see, uh, being this will be new sign that's added, do you see maybe a, a warning sign, uh, to the east before you get to this intersection?
We're, we're gonna put a flash...
Oh, you're gonna put a flash, like, okay.
Like we did at Oak.
Okay, so that way it's, it's new and it's, yeah, yeah. So, you don't just sneak up on people and they, they're not used to stopping, and then they realize they've just run right through a stop sign. Yeah, okay. Okay, sounds like a winner to me. All right, thank you. If there's no further questions, uh, I entertain a motion on this.
I move to authorize adding a stop sign at 21st and Taylor Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Jerry and John, thank you very much. Okay, moving along. Uh, the November 20, 21 sales tax report.
Do you have any questions for Lacy?
I don't, I see there, 2020 was definitely a very different year, but we seem to be following along as being the next highest amount, uh, collected during that timeframe when you compare it up to...
I think 2014 was a little bit higher, but not, but not by much.
Okay. And we have collected, um, already collected 105% of the budgeted amount of $1,935,000.
Yes.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, do you have questions for Lacy?
I do not.
No, it's pretty much, it is what it is.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Lacy. Okay, Kelly, city manager comments?
Uh, wanted to let you know that, um, the building permit has been issued for the distribution center.
Okay.
And the project value is $24 million.
Okay.
So, wanted to let you know that.
What was it? I couldn't hear you.
$24 million.
For what?
The distribution center building permit.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I saw moving earth out there. That's good.
Well, yeah, that is good. So, we're, we're getting closer to, yeah, to some more news.
Yes, and we're working, David, you might give them an update on the other project. We're working with them on precision.
Yes. Yes.
I died there. Uh, uh, the precision project is moving. They're working with their engineers, getting all of their, uh, site work and, uh, drainage and all those, uh, building plan stuff prepared to be able to submit for their building permit. So, that project is moving forward. They have done a little bit of just clearing some trees and stuff to help their engineers and surveyors work out there.
Sure.
We're moving forward with that one, too.
Okay, great, great news.
Yes. All right, thank you, David.
How's the sequencing of our, uh, street project, Enterprise and Laurel, working with those two projects? Are we gonna be?
Yes.
Dove-tailed and Utility also?
Yes, staying in very close contact with, uh, Chris Jones and, uh, Contegra, who's the contractor building, and the road project, and we are, the timelines are right on. So, uh, we're good.
What's the bid schedule for the street work?
I believe that's coming...
We have to check, 'cause I think John's left.
Yeah, I think they all left. I think it's coming up very shortly. We're getting ready to bid it. I don't think it's on the 23rd, but I think it's in January.
Do those have to be approved by KDOT?
Yes. I, I think that's where it's at.
Okay, it's that far along, good.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Is that it, Kelly?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Uh, commissioners, do you have any comments for tonight? Commissioner Hayes?
I have none.
Commissioner Kalish?
Um, the only thing I had, found an old contact with a marketing company that had expressed interest, had a potential buyer, uh, for the Mercy Building, and I double-checked the phone number, and they are still in business, and they would like to look at a packet. I told Kelly and Dave that I would get the information to them, but, uh, they're the company that had a, a client interested in a mental health facility, but that, they've found other facilities, but they are interested in looking at a, at the packet for the building.
We've had two local realtors also contact us about that as well.
Okay, all right. Uh, I don't have any comments for tonight. Um, we don't have a public concern. Um, I've talked to the, I've got information, and the scenario didn't play out, so they weren't interested in coming forward and, and making a presentation. So, at that point, uh, with that, we are up to adjournment, so I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.